We'll call the meeting to order. Okay, they're gonna lead us in the pledge today.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This is applause.
Okay, we will begin with the approval of the agenda. If I can get a motion.
Sure.
That would be great.
Madam President, I move that we approve the agenda with the following amendments. Additional classified and certified personnel actions. Add item E4B, out-of-state trip for the ROTC All Service Nationals. And add item E5A, technology bid for access points and switches.
Can I get a second?
My second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the agenda. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Is that an aye for me, Dana?
Yeah, aye.
Okay, thank you. All opposed? Motion passed. And then we will move on to our recognitions. Do we have any public comments?
Yeah.
First up is the JROTC National recognition.
Actually, Mr. Nord, we've got several here working on it.
Okay. You're the star of the show.
Well, as you all know, we're really proud of the activities that we have at Garden City High School. The students that participate in them and have such great talent, but also the adults that lead them and mentor them and have a lot of success with them. And so we've got three recognitions for you tonight. The first one, to do the first one, I'll call forward Colonel Burr, Sergeant Peterson with our ROTC group, and let them explain the great adventure that awaits them later on this spring.
Thank you, sir. Come on up, guys, please. Madam President, Board, I am Lieutenant Colonel Chris Burr. I've been with your program for four years. We have a great group of kids that we're working with this year. The seniors are representing, the freshmen, sophomores, juniors. They're all focused. Great energy is coming out of them. And a lot of that is due to my new partner. I picked up First Sergeant Peterson about a year and a half, or he's on his third semester now here at Garden City High School JROTC. And he is, he is new energy that is doing great things for the program. The Nationals, he'll talk with you about. He, he kinda knew the process to get us to Nationals. I was oblivious to it. And you look for the man with the expertise and you get after it. But more important than that, we have three of our cadets that we'll be talking with you here in just shortly. First Sergeant, would you?
Let you introduce. This is, uh, these are our cadets that are going to Nationals. I'm gonna let Jamale Reyes. She is our battalion commander currently right now in a corps of 158 cadets, which is extremely exciting. But she's the one that oversees these two individuals, makes sure that they do the practices they're supposed to do and are doing the things that they have to do to be successful. So I'm gonna let her take the horn here real quick and introduce these two commanders to you so you know a little bit about them.
Hello, good evening. As First Sergeant said, I am Lieutenant Colonel Jamale Reyes. And here I have Brandon Peterson, which is the commander of drill team. And then right here to my right is Jay Evans, which is the commander of color guard.
Do you guys wanna say something about this?
So, like our lovely battalion commander just said, my name is Brandon Peterson. What, you gotta acknowledge. My drill team, we've gone through kind of a hectic year because we didn't know who all was going to go. To this recent drill meet that we just went to in Leavenworth, placed seventh in our newcomers.
Out of 23 teams.
Out of 23 peop- 3, I can't even talk. Out of 23 JROTC programs that participated in the Leavenworth competition that we just went to, not last weekend, but the weekend before, we placed seventh out of 23. So that's actually really amazing that we've been able to do that. And Nationals should be.
I announce currently 48 teams that are signed up for Nationals.
Hopefully, we can pull off a first. That's what should happen.
I am Jay Evans. I am the commander of the JROTC color guard. And I am currently leading a group of seven people. But I am only taking three with me to the actual competition in Denver, was it? And I think we got 17th place in Leavenworth with my varsity color guard. And we're hoping to get way higher than the Nationals.
As you all have been introduced, I am First Sergeant Peterson. I am new to the program here at Garden City High School, not new to JROTC. A lot that goes on behind the scenes that no one understands. This young man right here, his team that's going to Nationals, just to kind of personify how amazing this is, this is an all-freshman team. All freshmen that are gonna go compete at the national level against some of the greatest schools in the world. And when I say that, this is a national level for all JROTCs. They'll be competing in the All Service Nationals, which includes Navy JROTC, Marines, Air Force, Coast Guard, and the Army itself. There right now, there's 48 schools across the world that will be there, from Guam and China, from Seoul, Korea, and even Germany that will be there to compete against these guys. They've worked hard, they've done a great outstanding thing. How did they get there? I just happen to know a First Sergeant who happens to be a national champion from Grant High School that I've worked with over the last four years. I sent him a video to ask the young man to say, "Hey, you mind looking at this video and telling me what we need to fix?" Unnoticed to me, he sent the video to the National Board. They reviewed it, sent it back and said, "Hey, we would like to invite your team to participate at the national level at Denver." Now, to personify some logistics here, just so the Board knows, there is really no cost to you for this, for this competition. Basically, the Army picks up the tab for our travel. They pick up the tab for our food, and they also pick up the tab for our room and board. So at this point in time, there is no additional expense to Garden City and USD 457 for these young cadets to go to Denver, Colorado and compete.
Good job, guys.
Sir, like I was saying beforehand, we started the year when he arrived a year and a half ago, we were at 100. When I arrived, we were at 87. Right now, our high watermark for this school year is 158. And we're not gonna lose, but right now, nine seniors. We may lose some juniors and sophomores, but we usually have about 50 to 60 freshmen come up every year. That'll push us in the 180, 190 cadet range, which is a great growth for this program. I attribute it to these, these cadets right here for their great leadership, and the First Sergeant for bringing a lot of energy in. We've got a program that's happening right now.
Thank you, guys. And I want to brag on this program a little bit because I know how hard the students and the staff work. And you guys are everywhere in the community and almost every event that I'm out into, participating in some way. So thank you for that.
Thank you.
Any else? Yeah, good luck in Nationals.
Yes. Come by here. First Sergeant.
Yeah, me too. Thank you, great job.
All right, congratulations.
So graduation, right? You gotta be ready for graduation.
All right. Congratulations. Congratulations. Good luck. First Sergeant, thanks so much again.
My pleasure.
Lieutenant Colonel, thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Yeah, ROTC is one of those programs we're really, really proud to have at Garden City High School. They're in their 11th year of having it. And at the time, for a long time, we've been the only school west of Wichita to have an ROTC program. Dodge is in their first year of having a program now. And from what I understand, Liberal will have a program next year. But, but having our decade of ROTC, we really think has set us apart and has filled a, filled a void, I think, in the interest of our students that we really didn't know we had until we brought them in. Kids have just blocked to them. And you can tell why, the energy and the things that they've got going on. It's great. The second recognition for Garden City High School tonight is Coach Prieto. Can we get Coach Prieto to come in along with Sebastian? All right. So tonight, we're happy to have Sebastian Lopez. We're happy to have Coach Carlos Prieto, Coach Paul Lappin, here to recognize Sebastian for winning the state championship about a week ago, or 10 days ago, at the state tournament. So we're really, really proud of what, what he's accomplished through a lot of hard work, along with his, once again, his coaches, his mentors. I'll let you go ahead, Carlos.
No, really happy for Sebastian. You know, he worked his tail off. The entire team, you know, we worked our tails off. And, you know, for us to come back and get third place this year, I think was a true testament with the kids, you know, believing in us, as coaches. I told our coaching staff, this is probably one of the best coaching jobs that we've done in the last 10 years just because we only had one returning state placer, and this big guy right here. And so we knew we had him to build on. He was kind of the foundation. And he is a big foundation, so. But, uh, now, really, really proud of you. We got a big tournament we're going to in a couple of weeks. We're going to Virginia, big national tournament. You know, trying to get these guys exposed to colleges and so forth. And we look forward to it, so anyway. Coach, anything?
Go Buffs.
Bashy?
Coach, what grade is Sebastian?
He is just a sophomore. Yeah, so we have him for a couple more years. So anyway, he, he's a multi-sport athlete as well, plays football. I think he ran track last year, or participated in track or baseball as well. I think he's, this year, I think he's gonna maybe just concentrate on wrestling in the spring and go train and try to get better. So anyway, big things from this guy in the future.
Congratulations. Thanks, Coach.
Oh, I do, a lot.
Extra points if you throw the super. Congratulations.
And our, our third recognition tonight will be of another national qualifier. And I'll have Ms. Alice Hilt, who is really director of our theater programs and a lot of our performing arts at Garden City High School, come on in here and, and describe our, our third and second of our national qualifying.
Thank you. I'm Alice Hilt, and I am the theater teacher at Garden City High School. And a few weeks ago, we held our local English-speaking union national qualifying tournament, which takes then a student to the state level, which we do that through the Kansas City branch. And so this year, Shyla was our representative. And this is Shyla Cowles, she's a senior. And she's also the head of my theater International Thespian Troops Society. So she's the president this year as well. And she was selected from the local to go on to our regional branch. And there, she placed second. And so she is actually first runner-up for the English-speaking union. And should the person who is in first place not be able to go, she would get a free trip to New York City to perform her monologue and her sonnet, celebrating the work of William Shakespeare. So Shyla, talk a little bit about what she did.
Hi, my name is Shyla Cowles. I am the president of GCHS Drama Department. So when I first started, I started at the high school and stuff. Everyone came in, did a little competition. We all had to memorize a Shakespeare monologue and a sonnet from a chosen list. I performed there and I got first place. Another classmate, Phoebe, got second, so she was runner-up for that. And so I went on to state level. Unfortunately, we did have to do that through Zoom because of COVID. But, you know, it's good for us performers because when we get sick, that's an issue. So I performed at state level and I placed second, which honestly was, it was a really fun experience and stuff. It was, I think it was great for my experience. There were so many opportunities I got through it. I got a lot of contacts with like professional theater people. So it was really great. Yeah, it was overall a great opportunity for me and for any other like thespians and actors. And I really recommend, like, if your kids are into theater, definitely get them into it because you get to meet a lot of cool people. It's definitely a career where you can build and it's just, it's fun, so.
So it's nice to acknowledge, I think, Shyla this month too because the month of March is also Theater in Schools Month. And so we, we promote the importance of theater education in our schools during the month of March. So it's really cool to get this recognition as well.
Now, are there any questions or comments?
We probably have over 250 kids in the high school participating in some capacity, whether it be through technical theater, which is our biggest numbers. I get about 75 per semester. And sometimes those are crossovers and sometimes not. And then I probably have about 60 to something actors that participate in different shows go up here. So we get a lot. Yes.
Thank you. Congratulations. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thanks for having me. You both look good. Oh, sure.
Congratulations, Shyla. Yes, ma'am. Want some congratulations? You know, it, it's nice to be able to do these recognitions. We got a lot of talented kids and, and, you know, not, not much of this is possible without the really talented mentors, the Colonel, Sergeant, Coach Prieto and his talented staff, and Ms. Hilt and all the great things that happen with our theater program. They do a wonderful job. But, but it's also due to the support that we know that we get from, from you, from all of our activities, whether they're the athletics or ROTC or the arts. We know that we have support here with, with the Board, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And then next up, we have the recognition of the Reader Across America Committee. I wasn't sure who was presenting.
Madam President, Board, I'm Gil Paredes, and the president of the Garden City Teachers Association. And right now, I would like to extend recognition to our Reader Across America Committee. It is a committee that is dedicated to promoting literacy and reading for all of our kids. And primarily, what they do is they get together with each other. And they put together a monthly list so that teachers and principals can take advantage of if they so desire. I'm gonna go ahead and let the committee members introduce themselves, and we'll go from there.
I'm Rodney Knight. I'm Victor Nellis, librarian.
Lindley Anderson, Charles Stones, librarian.
My name's Tammy Riggs, and I'm the librarian at Buffalo Jones Elementary School.
And I'm Cheryl Harris. I'm an interventionist at Alta Brown Elementary.
And we are missing, I'm sorry, Gil. We are missing two of our members this evening. Belinda Rescon, who teaches second grade at Alta Brown Elementary, and also Morgan Alaman, who is kindergarten at Florence Wilson. They could not be with us tonight.
This is a new committee for the GCA. We established this last year. So for the amount of work and the tremendous efforts that they've put together, they've done an outstanding job. And we are a committee that is dedicated to reading. And I owe it all to these ladies who keep everything going. I'm gonna let Ms. Anderson talk to you about a larger part of the association. And it is a, called the Reader Circle. And she will introduce that to you guys and let you guys know what all of that is about.
Thank you, Gil. So I am coming on as the new Southwest KNEA Reading Circle Commissioner for 2022 to 2024. I've served three years. And the Kansas NEA Reading Circle Commission has been in existence since 1926. And it is a commission of 15 commissioners, one from each UNISERV. And every year, we put together a list of over 180-plus titles that comes out in this book, Kansas NEA Reading Circle, which has been provided to school libraries and districts across the state of Kansas. Each committee, there are four. There's a primary, which is K4. There's an intermediate, which is, or I'm sorry, K2. Intermediate, which is 35. Junior Committee, which is 6 through 8. And that's the committee that I will be serving on. And then there's a high school committee. So each commissioner will receive anywhere between 250 to 350 books in the mail, beginning here soon, that we are expected to read and write reviews on. We then come together at our annual meeting in January to put together a list of our top 60 titles that we will recommend across the state of Kansas. They will be affixed. Mrs. Knight has some examples that she brought back with us. They're affixed with a Kansas NEA Reading Circle Commission sticker that designate that they have been awarded one of the top 60 spots. They're also stamped on the inside, compliments of the Kansas NEA Reading Circle because at our district UNISERV, which was just held in February of this year, these books are taken to that UNISERV meeting where members who attend are allowed to choose as many of the books as they would like. And then those books are taken back to their local school district and member librarian and donated into the school library system. And so I think Ronnie came back. This is just a sample. How many did you come back with this year?
Okay, 10.
She came back with 10 because our former commissioner was on the primary committee. I came back with two because that's all that fit into my library.
You see books in front of you. These are just a few of the elementary books that were chosen by some of us. And a lot of good titles, a lot of good stories. You have the opportunity to go ahead and review those. And as Lindley said, you know, just a few of several hundreds of books that are read and passed out to us UNISERV members.
What's nice in our library system, we can designate in that it was a donation and it was donated by KNEA Reading Circle. So I make sure whenever I have a book that's donated to the library, I do that.
So KNEA donates back to school districts, statewide, excuse me, thousands of dollars in reading material. Because when you take the minimum of 250 times 15 commissioners, that's a lot of books, so, and a lot of dollars. Thank you.
And we try not to take all the books because it's supposed to be to all the libraries in our area and not just ours.
But Ronnie's reading.
And that is primarily what our committee has been doing. And it is also what our UNISERV has been doing with respect to statewide reading and promoting literacy and things of that nature. Any questions?
I did bring, I don't have enough for everybody, but when we went to Georgia Matthews the other day and met with the mayor, Dana was there and she asked if I would bring these frequently asked questions. So I'm sorry. Hopefully, I can either get you more copies or something, but I do have a couple. But it just kind of explains the Reader Across America concept. I should have made enough, I just made a couple, sorry.
And do you know how many, you had lots of events last week. Did all the schools participate in some way? Did you guys?
I think all of them participated, participated in some way. Lindley is really good at sending out an email district-wide so that everybody has those ideas. Some of the schools did Spirit Week. We didn't, we usually do it as a district, but we're really trying to get the district to see that it's year-round, not one week. So like in my building, I still did a Spirit Week because they very much wanted it.
Right.
And I want it focused on what NEA focuses on, if we're gonna have one. And I think we'll go back to doing the Spirit Week district-wide, hopefully. But we just really want them to realize it's not one week, it's not one day, it's all year. So that was kind of why we held off on that. That was a committee decision.
And there were committee members that participated in this too.
Correct. And when, when they did the proclamation at Georgia Matthews, we had the school board and the mayor, or I don't know what the system.
The vice mayor.
Thank you. And, and then Gil and then our committee, so. And I, Dana and I were talking. We think that would be kind of neat to do maybe at more than just one school.
Yeah.
Even if you did it for the week at least or something, you'd at least hit five schools, but it was pretty neat.
In the past, for the proclamation, Mr. Cessna and the president of the GCA have usually been the ones to kick off Reader Across America. I felt very strongly that because this is a new committee and we work so very hard, that they needed to be a part of that process as well. And it was certainly a pleasure. Dana brought a book that I was just in love with. It was a farting book. And I thought that the kids would enjoy that much more than the book that she read. But she did read a specific title to the kids and I really enjoyed that as well.
If only you were supposed to call on that.
I'm not supposed to tell you.
Sorry, Dana.
He's not good at keeping secrets, Dana.
Well, I really appreciated being able to do that. And I really encourage other board members if you get the opportunity. And I really, I wish I could be their person because that was just really fun. And it was a part of that you attended to and happened. Kids were excited about it. The class from Iowa's been with the third grade at Georgia Matthews and they were fantastic. And really great, but just, so, thank you for that.
Thank you for inviting us.
I would also like to extend our gratitude to Mr. Cessna, who's been very instrumental in getting the information out.
Yeah. And he, he does a nice job of making sure the proclamation and everything's accurate with the information I give you. I gave you.
Thank you for the time you put in.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Onto our building presentation. We have some very patient kids in the hallway. Yes. Good evening.
Evening.
My name is Gina Galpin. I am the principal at Verdant Intermedia Center. We have 450 fifth and sixth graders and some of them are here tonight to share some highlights from our building. They chose the topics and the information and most of them wrote their scripts to share with you. So I'm going to turn it over to them at this time.
Hi, my name is Alcorn Flanis. I'm a member of Student Council and Assignment Language Club. We have been working on learning how to sign our BSIC Vision and Mission Statement, which we will perform through the year. Vision Statement.
At BSIC, all students will become lifelong learners for a better tomorrow.